Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for four hearings today. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee, Councilman Isaac Gitze Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee, to my right, Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee, Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, and Council Vice President Sharon Green Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have Sophia G. on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott. I know we've got folks on behalf of Council President Mosby on virtually. And before we get started, I want to take a minute to recognize Mayor Bernard C. Jack Young, who's joining us today in Council Chambers. Mayor Young, thank you for being here with us today. We're going to start off with Council Bill 22-0266, sale of property 1200 North Fremont Avenue. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency, anything to add?
No.
Thank you. Department of Finance does not oppose?
No objection.
Thank you. Department of Planning favorable, Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development favorable?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. I stand by our bill report, and I also wanted to recognize Deputy Commissioner Edwards today. We stand by our bill report favorable.
Deputy Commissioner Edwards, can you give us a 15-second summary of what's happening here?
Yeah, so this is...
Can you use the mic, please? Thank you.
This has been awarded to the Salvation Army. They are planning to put offices in the space.
Excellent. Thank you. Department of Real Estate?
Casey Kelleher from the Department of Real Estate. We stand by our report in support of this ordinance. Thanks.
Okay. I have, your report's been submitted, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Casey, can you please make sure that gets sent in? Because I think there may have been some wires crossed, but we know your position is support. And Board of Estimates, this will be submitted to BOE after Council Action. Colleagues, are there any questions on this? We've also been joined by Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Is there any public testimony on this bill? Anyone here to testify on this bill? Sale of property 1200 North Fremont Avenue? Excellent. All right. Perfect. Do we have anyone online who's testifying? Okay. Great. Colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Motion by Council Vice President Middleton, is there a second? Second by Councilman Stokes. Costello is a yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yeah.
Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes 7-0, moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 22-0268, sale of property 800 Poplar Grove Street. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency, anything to add?
No.
Thank you. Department of Finance does not oppose, anything to add?
Sorry, nothing to add, no objection.
Thank you. Department of Planning favorable? Excellent. Department of Housing and Community Development, Ms. Murdock?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. We stand by our bill report in support of this bill. Just a little background, this would allow for the public or private sale of 800 Poplar Grove. The property is estimated at 3.99 acres and is located in the Franklin Town Road neighborhood in the 7th District. The property is Zoned R6, the three-level former elementary school constructed in 1982, includes 29 parking spaces and an open lot, playground space, classrooms, offices, a cafeteria, a kitchen, stage, elevator, loading dock, and a hardscaped area. The ordinance would provide for the sale of this property, and the property is going to be sold to Associated Catholic Charities of Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner Edwards, do you have anything to add, or good?
No, nothing to add.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate?
Casey Kelleher from the Department of Real Estate. We're supportive of this bill. Thank you.
Board of Estimates, this will be submitted to BOE after City Council Action. Colleagues, any questions? Anyone here in person to testify on this bill? Anyone online to testify? Colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
So move.
Motion by Council Vice President Middleton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Burnett. Costello, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes 7-0, moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. We're going to take a three-minute recess. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session. Council Bill 22-0272, sale of property 2333 East Chase Street. We will not be hearing that bill today. We will schedule a hearing as necessary at a later date. You can follow the status of that on the Baltimore City Council's website. Finally, Council Bill 22-0299, tax credits, historic properties, application extension. I'm going to, I co-sponsored this bill with Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Bullock to give a brief overview of the bill before we get to agency reports. Councilman Bullock?
Good morning, committee members, and good morning, Mr. Chair. Again, appreciate the opportunity. Again, as you know, the historic tax credit for CHAP, again, is one that's very much utilized throughout the city of Baltimore, including parts of west and southwest Baltimore that I represent. Again, we believe it's a great opportunity for folks to make improvements to their properties, to attract that type of care and concern for communities and market some of our neighborhoods for folks who may not really be thinking about it, and then also provide some relief for some of those homeowners who are making those advancements to their properties, given some of the economic challenges that they can face. So again, I appreciate the co-sponsorship, appreciate the support of others. As we've talked about, this bill or the tax credit was set to expire. Again, my belief that, again, another five years would provide not only an ability for folks to take advantage of the credit, but also some predictability moving forward. So again, thank you for the time and consideration.
Thank you, Councilmen. Agree with everything you said, and would like to note, this is probably the most equitable credit that we have in our portfolio of credits that are available. With that, we're going to jump to agency reports. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair, nothing to add.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development favorable? Anything to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Planning favorable? Well, I'm going to come back to you for CHAP. Department of Planning, anything to add? Favorable? Okay, good. Board of Estimates will be submitted to the BOE after City Council Action. Let's jump to Commission for Historic and Architectural Preservation, Mr. Holcomb?
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity. I just wanted to say a couple of things. This credit's been around for 25 years. It's helped rehabilitate 4,500 properties and helped leverage about $1.3 billion in rehabilitation activity. I think it's one of the most successful programs in neighborhood revitalization that's out there, and I think that the numbers really state that. I would like to ask Stacy Montgomery to provide you with some of the, more of the facts here. She is the tax credit manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. So just briefly, the CHAP Commission did vote in support of this bill at its December 2022 CHAP hearing, and that was for the five-year extension that will give time for planning in the Department of Finance and CHAP to also work to make this credit more accessible throughout the city, and also look at fiscal impacts of any kind of expansion. As Eric said, the CHAP tax credit has been an important tool for community revitalization for over 20 years. It's leveraged $1.3 billion in investment in property throughout the city. The majority of the properties are just rowhouse rehabs. There are some large sort of transformational projects, the American Brewery, the Senator Theater, but lots of rowhouses, blocks of vacants, the 1200 block of North Gay Street is a great example of that. We have some folks, like if you know Shelley Hallstead, Black Women Build, they're using that credit now over in west Baltimore, so they're really excited about that. The credit is really most beneficial for rehabbing the city's vacant buildings because the credit is most advantageous where there's that gap in that pre-rehab and post-rehab value. And in the last four years, there's been over 200 vacant buildings rehabbed in the east and west Baltimore neighborhoods, and so we just really want to continue to see that credit take advantage of those distressed, in those distressed communities. The tax credit, it offsets the increase in property taxes that occurs when a substantial rehab happens, so that leaves property owners with a bill that only reflects that pre-rehab value for 10 years. That means for homeowners, that makes a much lower monthly mortgage payment for them. But the tax credit, it's not a buy-ride program. It requires that applicants meet a very high standard for rehab. That means that CHAP, myself, right now, we review all interior and exterior work before the project begins, and then we review it afterwards, make sure properties are permitted, that they've spent the required costs, and so that gives sort of a quality assurance for the rehabs. It's not like fly-by-night people who can just flip and leave, and that also helps to retain and increase property values and bring back or retain neighborhood character. Back in 2020, Place Economics, which is a consulting firm that specializes in the economics of historic preservation, published an analysis of Baltimore's historic tax credit. That's available on our website, but the report had a couple of key findings, and I'm going to very, very briefly summarize. First is that the credit produces value, that properties that receive those credits that have now expired as of 2019 increased in value from $17 million in 2000 to $211 million in 2019, and that income from those property tax credit, properties, rose from $1.3 million in 2000 to $5.9 million in that time. And many of these projects just wouldn't have happened at all without the tax credit. We know that. We survey our users, they say they wouldn't use, more than 80% of people answer in the affirmative, they would not rehab a property without the tax credit. Not they wouldn't do a little bit, they wouldn't do it at all. So that's really important to remember. Secondly, that the taxes foregone over 10 years are recouped by the city and just over seven years after that. And third, they found that the tax credit projects have a halo effect, so properties that are located within 500 feet of CHAP tax credit projects see increases in aggregate property values that are greater than those within 500 feet to 1,000 feet, and greater than those within the rest of the city. And that incremental rate of growth value in that halo area creates a preservation premium that is over $2.5 billion in property values. So even if a portion of that is attributable to the tax credit, the city gets back what they lose each year through the credit. Finally, the program creates jobs. From 2014 to 2019, an average of $36 million a year in labor income was paid to local workers because of the CHAP tax credit. And like I said, this full report is available online, and we just encourage the approval of the five-year renewal because that tax credit really helps to make, keep Baltimore or preserve what makes Baltimore Baltimore, our neighborhood character and our unique streetscapes, and it makes rehab and homeownership more affordable and addresses vacancy in our distressed communities. Thank you.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes. So can you, can you just elaborate a little bit on some of these homes that we're talking about? So what's like the cost savings on their taxes per year over that 10-year period of time for a standard house that you're seeing?
Sure. And depending on, many of the homes that come to us, they are vacant, they are not inhabitable, right? They're missing floors, they're missing roofs, not all of them, but some, many of them, and they may go from a value, you know, I don't know what the average, you could ask the Department of Finance what the average value of the tax credit is, they're involved in calculating that, but it could be anywhere from a $2,000 to a $4,000 to a $5,000 or $6,000 credit, depending on what that difference is between the pre-rehab value of the property and the post-rehab value of the property.
Gotcha. And so within that range, what's the cost for construction of a historic property versus that same-sized property that is a few blocks over, not in a historic district?
So I can't speak to what's happening not in historic districts, since I don't see that information, but I can speak to what we see through the tax credit is right now, people are spending somewhere between 100 to over $200,000 per property, and where those properties are in vacant or more distressed communities, they may not be able to recoup that amount through the sale alone. So some are spending more than the property is worth.
So do you have like a ballpark, like price per square foot on construction of a historic home?
I don't have that, but I think there may be some users of the program who might be able to speak to that, who are on the call, could talk to that.
I'm sorry, who is that?
There may be some users on the call today, or who are calling in who might be able to speak to that, but I don't have that information on hand. We could get that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Councilman Stokes?
Real quick, can we, committee get the data on where those tax credits being applied?
Sure. Sure. I have actually, well, I don't have. So we can send a spreadsheet that shows year by year where those applications are happening and where those certifications are happening. Historically, they've been centered around our waterfront communities a lot, in Canton and moving up to Patterson Park and moving further up on the east side. But over the last four years, we've seen a dip in applications from those areas, and more applications trending higher in East Monument and in Broadway East and Oliver and over in west Baltimore as well.
Okay. Thank you.
But I can provide those exact numbers, too.
We're going to take quick testimony from BBMR, and then we're going to go into recess on this bill. We understand that the authorizing legislation sunsets on February 28th. We are going to take action on this, and we're going to do it in a very expedited manner, but we're going to need to go into recess because of commitments that other council members have. This kind of went a little longer than originally anticipated, so we will be taking public testimony when we reconvene the hearing. For those who are listening or those are here to testify in person, you can, actually, I will call, we will reconvene on this matter on next Tuesday, which I believe is February 7th, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll reconvene on this matter next Tuesday at 10:00 AM. So Bob, I'm going to keep your testimony brief. I understand you oppose and you have a proposed amendment, and then we'll go into recess.
Sure. Thank you. Bob Sennott, we're representing the Department of Finance. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. We submitted a pretty detailed bill report. I just wanted to mention a couple of things to the committee. So BBMR worked with our financial consultant, Ernst &amp; Young, to do a deep dive on all of the city's tax credits, and you know, the intent of that was so that when we came upon these points where tax credits were ready to expire or to be extended, that we had at least some data to share with the council to help in the decision-making process. And so we did review the CHAP credit, and a lot of the comments we have in our report kind of echo our more full report, which was released in 2022 and is available on BBMR's website. So I would say first, we agree with a lot of what planning is saying. This program has been a really effective tool to encourage renovations of small properties, and you know, there are, you know, thousands of properties that have used the CHAP tax credit, which we think has been a good thing. There are two really critical flaws, though, in this program that I think have limited the cost-effectiveness of the program, and I don't think we've gotten the best bang for the buck as a city out of this program for two reasons. First thing quickly is that the properties eligible for this credit have to be in a designated historic district, and for those of you who have seen the historic district maps, it's a little bit distorted in my mind in terms of using it for a development credit. If you look at the maps, it kind of runs basically right down the center of the city north-south. It includes Homeland, it includes Cedar Croft, it includes Roland Park, it includes Guilford, it includes Charles Village, it includes Mount Vernon, and then it kind of hugs the adjacent areas, harbor-adjacent areas, Federal Hill, Otterbine, Locust Point, Canton, Brewers Hill, Butchers Hill. There are other parts of the city that benefit from this program. You know, in the southwest, you have Ten Hills and Hunting Ridge. The northeast, you have Lauraville and Arcadia, and there are some pretty large chunks of east and west Baltimore that are included in the program. But the point in all of this is that the historic map doesn't really have any bearing on where we should be devoting resources and where we should be choosing to spend our development dollars. The second, and I would just say to wrap, just to summarize that point, I believe that this credit should be decoupled from the historic designation, that we should be looking at a more broader citywide credit with certain controls so that we could open it up to more parts of the city. The second, I think, flaw in the program is the, this is the only program that provides 100% tax credit on the improved value of the property over 10 years. And I'm not sure, it's really unclear why there needs to be such an aggressive subsidy. Again, some subsidy we think is good and necessary for this program, but I do question why it needs to be 100% over 10 years. We have other tax credit programs, most of our tax credit programs actually start at 80% in the first five years, and they decline over time to 30% in year 10. So for example, the Enterprise Zone tax credit for very complicated commercial projects gets an 80% credit, it declines to 30, then it goes away. The High Performance Market Rate Tax Credit, one that we've talked a lot about in the context of the Inclusionary Housing Bill that's being looked at now, it's a 10-year credit, starts at 80%, declines to 30 in year 10, then goes away. So this one is the most aggressive subsidy that we have, and when you combine that with a very aggressive 100% subsidy with some of the neighborhoods that it benefits, in my opinion is we're, we probably are at a point where we can graduate some of those neighborhoods out of this program, or keep them in a program but have a less generous subsidy, which I still think would be enough to really encourage some of those remaining renovations that should be happening in those neighborhoods. So I would say in some, you know, our position is, we think it's a good program, but we just think it's time to take a deeper look at this and figure out, do we really need to provide 100% subsidy to a place like a Federal Hill where there's already a very strong incentive for residents to improve their properties? Assessed values in those neighborhoods have increased dramatically over the past 10 to 15 years, and there's a strong incentive for people to, you know, throw money, put money into their homes to renovate if they know they can recapture some of that value when the property gets sold. What we are recommending today is not to do just a five-year blanket extension, what we would ask to do is extend it for a shorter period of time. We suggested 18 months, and then give us the time to go back and look at revisions to this program to potentially make it a citywide credit in a way that will actually target some investment better to where that investment is really needed in the city. So I guess the final comment would be also, you know, in these credits, what we've noticed when we did our bill report and when we did our tax credit report, when these credits come up, it kind of feels like you're either pro-development or not. I feel like we're pro-development, but we also want to be pro-common sense about looking at these credits when they hit these points and say, hey, maybe there's actually areas that have benefited so much that it's time to move the benefit to other neighborhoods and encourage additional development in other parts of the city. So those are my comments, and I'm happy to take questions from the, from the committee.
Any questions? Mr. Chair? Ed?
Thank you, Director. One quick question, and this is related to not only this bill, but we have a companion bill that we were looking at, which is also the change in nature of historic, right? Which was then to include a broader definition in terms of areas, in terms of certified heritage area. I believe Finance was not supportive of that, or would that be something to be supportive of moving forward?
I'm not familiar with that bill. Is that currently being considered by the council, or is it upcoming?
Yeah, that came in front of the committee, that's 2101-78. So again, that was, again, changing the definition of historic. I'm just looking at your previous position on it back on March 7, or we talked about, it had a hearing back in March around that, yeah.
I don't remember it off the top of my head. I would just say, you know, I think this program should be decoupled from any kind of historic designation. I do think that having CHAP involved in the program, and we've talked to them about this, is a good thing because it helps, you know, because of the standards that they require properties to be, you know, completed with, that it guarantees that there's going to be high-quality improvements, but I don't think that the historic designation, it's too, it's too complicated, the factors that go into creating those designations. We would rather have a broader tax credit that doesn't have to be limited by those, by those designations.
Right. Just to follow up to that. So your position, that was April 29th of 2022, when you guys, again, had a negative finding on that piece, but to your point, I do see us introducing additional historic districts. So as was mentioned before, right, we have Poplin, we have Sariann Street Houses, obviously we have other historic districts that are benefiting from it, but I think in terms of a broader sense, I get your point.
Council Vice President? Thank you. I think CHAPs can probably answer this. As you know, there have been problems. I know you had mentioned about some people buying these homes, flipping them and selling them in some areas, and you know that I have a problem in some of my areas. What have you, can you update us on how you're preventing certain, those types of things from happening again? As they buy these large homes and, that are in these areas and rebuild them and not going through the CHAP process, and here we have some homes that have been completed and people move in them without even knowing that there were problems, and buying them without even knowing there were problems with windows and doors, and then they're held responsible. So it's another layer there, set aside from the tax credit, which is the attraction. Can you just kind of respond to that? Thanks.
Sure. So I think you're speaking to properties in local CHAP historic districts that have purchased those properties and found out that there was work that was done that wasn't approved by CHAP, but I think that's different than the tax credit, but we did introduce recently, I think actually Councilman Bullock introduced legislation recently to include in every real estate contract notification that a property is located within a Baltimore City Historic District, and I believe that, hopefully we'll see that in the council soon, but the CHAP Commission has approved, has recommended approval of that legislation so that when folks go under contract, they'll become aware of the fact that their property is within a Baltimore City Historic District and needs to come before CHAP, so then they can look into, has my property gone through that process and find that out? Is that helpful?
Thank you. I just need you to say that publicly, since we're being recorded.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just trying to understand, maybe this was already asked, I don't know. I'm trying to understand where, I know about covenants, right? I know I got the, you know, many of the Greater Northwood Covenant neighborhoods in my district, I know about other covenants in the city that require things like wood windows and slate roofs and things like that. I just don't, I don't know anything about state or federal historic designation. Are there things in federal and state designations of historic areas that also require things like that? Specific provisions about how you construct things?
Sure. So if you're in a federal, like a National Register Historic District, which I think a lot of the neighborhoods in your district, Lauraville is one, those neighborhoods, they have the, they have like the best of both worlds. They can choose to obtain historic tax credits, and then they're required to do things like get wood windows and meet the requirements of either the city tax credit, there's also a state and a federal tax credit that also incentivizes historic preservation, so they can, they have to follow that then. But otherwise, they don't have to. They can paint their house pink and purple, and that's fine, so long as there's not something like an easement from the state of Maryland or something like that. If there's nothing else restricting them, then there's no restriction on it if you're just located in a National Register Historic District. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So if I'm, if I'm located in one of those areas, I am or may be eligible for federal or state?
Or Baltimore City tax credits.
Yeah. Credits, maybe even grants to help with preservation work. I don't necessarily, I don't need to be in a city-designated area in order to be eligible for those federal or state programs, but if I'm in a, but only if I'm in a city-designated area am I eligible for the city tax credit?
No. You're eligible for the city's historic tax credit if you're in a Baltimore City Historic District, and there's what, 38, maybe 38 historic, local historic districts, and also within our, I think we have 70 National Register Historic Districts in Baltimore City. All of those neighborhoods are eligible for the city's historic tax credit plus individually-designated Baltimore City or National Register landmarks. I think that's about 90,000 properties in the city. But only one of them requires you, the Baltimore City one, you're required to meet the CHAP guidelines even if you don't apply for a tax credit, if you're in a Baltimore City Historic District.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand Bob's suggestion here, is if we decouple the tax credit from historic districts, then we could potentially like, that opens a conversation about doing away with like certain types of maintenance requirements, right? Like, so if I'm, if I'm in a CHAP district, then I have to maintain, I don't know... Like, so if I'm, if I'm in a CHAP district, then I have to maintain, I don't know, wood windows, slate roofs, I don't know, whatever those standards are for the CHAP district. But if we decouple the tax credit, we could, what, do away with those requirements also? Or we wouldn't be able to do away with those requirements unless we did away with the city designation of the area?
I think it's a, we could look at it maybe a little bit simpler, is that there are 38 local historic districts and 72 National Register Historic Districts, some neighborhoods are both. We want to expand the eligibility of the tax credit to other neighborhoods, maybe more distressed neighborhoods, more neighborhoods that need or that could use this tool for revitalization. How we do it is the question, and there are several things that we've been thinking about. Councilman Bullock brought out the idea of changing the definition of historic, and that may, that would increase the eligibility of the credit to other neighborhoods and other properties. There are probably other ways to do it, the decoupling from the CHAP, it would not be a historic tax credit anymore, it would be just a rehabilitation tax credit. Philadelphia, for example, had a 10-year tax credit, property tax credit on significant improvements to any property in, in the city. And that really, I don't know what the, what folks are saying, but I think that really sort of incentivized a lot of their rehabilitation. So it would be something like that. What it would take, it may take state legislation change, it may take city council legislation change, it may take both, but that's the conversation to have. I think the importance right now is that we have a tax credit program that's going to sunset February 28th. We don't want that to sunset because there's lots of folks out there doing great work right now, and we want to make sure that continues. After we work on making sure that that, the program does not shut down February 28th, let's talk about the idea of expanding the eligibility, decoupling it from, from history. I don't know what those questions are, the data's not there. We haven't talked to sort of the lawyers that could really help us negotiate what we need to do. I haven't talked to any state legislatures either, so I mean, see what I'm saying?
Yeah. You're kind of anticipating my next question, which is like, what would be a reasonable timeline? Because I don't, what's the proposal here that we extend it for five?
It's, it's.
Five additional years? Yeah, five additional years. That seems like a long time to continue the tax credit that Finance has some, I think.
But that doesn't lock us, right, but that doesn't lock us in to coming back 12 months from now, 18 months.
I know, but I've been down, you know, ain't my first rodeo, right? We, I know that work expands to fill the available time, right?
And the city council's been really gracious because this is actually our third time coming to you with an extension in the last three or four.
Right, and we haven't fixed it in any of those other extended periods, so.
Is, yeah.
So I'm concerned about that, that length of time. But I'm, but I guess my other questions were related to it costing more. To Bob's concern is like, why is this the only one that's 100% abatement on the value of the improvements?
And it's the most successful, too. So I mean, you know, 4,500 properties, $1.3 billion. Has any other tax credit done that?
I don't know, but I didn't finish what I was saying. It's that, is that there is an, there is a, it costs more to do the kind of things that a CHAP district requires you to do, and I do understand, it's exclusionary. Like, I'm the guy here who's always talking about exclusionary housing policies, how government policies force segregation of neighborhoods. If I can't afford to do the level of work that a CHAP district requires me to do, then I am precluded from living in that neighborhood. Maybe a 100% tax abatement on the increased value of that work is a way of mitigating some of the exclusionary impact of that. But I don't know that that's a better solution than not requiring those, those construction methods in the first place. It's kind of the tail wagging the dog in a way. So I think this is complex, and I have real concerns about the, this tax credit from a number of different perspectives. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question about how this works. So the credit kicks in when someone applies to do work on the property, and then it's the 10 years after that? Can you just do the mechanics there for just a second?
Sure. So the credit is something that people have to apply for. So you have to put together an application first, and wonderfully, we have a lovely online system, it's fantastic. People apply first, we review it first, so people don't go and like order everything and do the work. We review it before they start any work. That includes any interior demolition, because for the CHAP tax credit, we review interiors and exteriors. So unless there's some kind of emergency, I mean, even that has to get approval from CHAP, we review everything that's happening to the building beforehand, and we, applicants have to submit a really detailed scope of work, photos of the entire property, plans, if they're like moving walls, doing any additions, decks, anything like that, we review the whole thing. And then if everything looks good, then we issue an approval, and at that point, they can start the project. They have to come back to us at the end, and we do a final review, again, where we look and make sure, did they do everything they said they would do? Did it meet what they said, they said they would do? Look at final photos, did they meet, there is a cost requirement, folks have to invest at least 25% of the current value of the property, so we make sure their costs match up. And they have to get permits, and we look to see if they got all their permits, if they needed a UNO, that they got that. And then if everything checks out, then they are what's called certified for the credit. And then after that, once the next tax bill is issued, then they get the tax credit. So there's, it's, it's a high bar. It's not like just a giveaway, you don't just apply, and unfortunately, you can't do the work and then apply. You have to go through a dual review, before and after, and we check, you know, very, there's a lot to review. So that's how it works. And then the credit is issued upon successful completion of the project and issuance of a new tax bill.
So thank you for going over that, I appreciate it. So just a follow-up there. You, so in the plans, you're getting also the cost of the work, so that the credit isn't offsetting the cost of the work in general, the credit is actually offsetting the cost of the work and the, you know, anything that comes after that for 10 years.
So the credit doesn't impact the cost of the work? There's no?
No, I know, but the person paid out, you know, a certain amount of money.
Right.
And then recoups it through the, basically doesn't pay taxes for, you know, that amount of time.
They don't pay taxes on the improved value.
On the improved value.
They do pay taxes on the pre-improvement value, and if, and if the property, like, let's say seven years through the 10-year credit, if the whole neighborhood gets reassessed and those property values increase again, they're not going to pay, there, there is an additional tax that they would pay. So it's not a freeze of their taxes, it's a, it's a credit, it's money that comes off the tax bill for 10 years. But most of our projects are done, they're done by folks who do development, who are developers, so it's, and they sell it to somebody, so they're really selling the credit and the lower monthly debt service to a homeowner. So it's, a developer does most of the work and sells it to a person who is going to use that credit. So usually, the developer isn't, they, I don't know how, if they recoup the money, but they're not recouping it through the credit.
Right, so the credit stays with the property, it doesn't stay with rent?
Whoever pays the property tax bill gets the tax credit.
Uh huh, for that amount of time.
Yes. And if somebody sells it five years down the line, whoever buys it gets the rest of the credit.
Okay, thanks for going over those mechanics with me.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So again, as Chairman Costello said, we are going to need to reconvene this hearing. We're going to do so next Tuesday, February 7th at 10:00 AM. And at that point, we will also hear public testimony. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.